Okay, who is going to be doing the code board discussion?
Well, you're going to be doing the discussion. As far as the introduction, I know what you mean. It's being facetious. Actually, the building board and of course, all other boards meet on a routine basis, code board. And during those discussions, part of that is a quasi judicial function for some of the boards. The code board specifically, last month, had one of these discussions where some of the more contentious citations were discussed specifically on the sign ordinance. And the meeting was long, obviously, and part of the meeting degenerated, I would say, into something that didn't specifically comply with the rules of conduct that you have on the wall when it came to personal opinion of respondents, et cetera. And then there was also some conduct that when you look at the ordinance where it specifies in the ordinance for quasi judicial boards that there needs to be impartiality and the opinions formed for the outcome of the meeting need to be impartial when you come in and form based on the information that was presented during the meetings themselves, not a preconceived idea that's been like a judge that would go in the paper and say, "I'm, you know, trying, someone accused of murder tomorrow and I'm going to find him guilty and here's why." You know, that kind of prejudices the proceeding and in some cases, depending on how a vote may go, not necessarily in this case, but how a vote may go, that could prejudice the whole proceeding itself against what the city's trying to accomplish. So, those items and issues certainly occurred during the last meeting. There was to be another meeting on the 19th, I believe it was, of this month that took up a very similar case for people that were cited for sign code violations. And that meeting's been deferred until next month until city council had a chance to discuss proper decorum, rules of conduct, and specifically the quasi judicial requirements in the ordinance of impartiality so that it doesn't prejudice prejudice the procedure itself prior to those issues being taken up again. The discussion would be not only, I'm sure you've all watched the meeting, what occurred at the meeting, but if there are members that have violated the rules of conduct or the specific decorum for quasi judicial meetings, should we take some steps to make sure board members are aware of proper procedure, have training, be sanctioned, what that may involve as an outcome of this discussion.
Go ahead. All of those things that you said are true, but the thing that to me was the most bothersome is that it wasn't the litigants that were on trial as much as our ordinance. That's the way it came across to me and to several others. The, the boards and the commissions are not there to make up the rules or decide if they like what the city council has deemed to be the law. The, is it something I said? The, the fact that they were, I didn't feel that any of the decisions made were made based on what our current laws are. They were discussing the law, not whether the law was broken, but they were discussing the law. And the gentleman that came in with the pile of papers that he had already prepared, I mean, talk about violating the quasi judicial spirit of things, that, I was appalled. I was just appalled. And, and I was also very surprised that I got three letters about it by, from people who had watched the meeting and couldn't believe that this was Punta Gorda city government. So, I think we need to, I looked it up, there's a wonderful handbook that the city clerk's office has prepared for board members. You can't get much clearer of what their jobs and duties are. And nowhere in it, it's about what, eight, 16 pages long, 20 pages long, nowhere in it does it say that the board gets to decide whether or not they like the law, therefore are they going to enforce it? That's not how this city works. We are a community of laws. And once the laws have been made, it is up to everybody in our staff, our government, our police department to support those laws. And I'm sorry, this meeting was a travesty. That's all I'm going to say.
I, I agree. I spent five and a half hours watching it painfully. And the fact that this is a judicial, quasi judicial board that makes decisions, final decisions on people's futures and their, and the repercussions that go with them. These people on, on this particular board need to understand that they represent the city when they are sitting at this dais. They represent the rules that the city has in place, they are there to enforce them, they are there to not express personal opinions, not to do name calling, not to speak to the media before a quasi judicial hearing takes place. One of the members actually went on record and was quoted in a New York Times article a couple of days before the meeting, which is against all the rules that we live by. If we ever did that, we'd be, we'd be thrown under the ethics commission at the state level and, and be fired from our jobs and fined and maybe even go to jail. When people sit at this dais, they need to remember, they represent the city, they represent everything the city stands for, they have to maintain professional decorum. When they come to the meeting, they need to come with an open mind to listen to what the evidence and testimony is that's presented at that meeting and make a decision based on the facts. They didn't do that. There were at least two board members that, in my opinion, did not follow the rules. And there needs to be some action taken about it. I, I served on boards and committees for the better part of 12 years, and I can tell you that I have never, in all the years I've been involved in city government, seen that kind of activity happen. I've never known anybody to be removed from a board or committee, but at this point, I feel like we have to take some action about it. That's my personal opinion about it. It was serious enough, you're right, we got letters from people. We had, we even had a staff meeting that I sat in on and we discussed it at great length. And this is not okay. We can't, we can't do this, we can't perform like this. And we can't have people sitting at the dais representing the city who are going to act that way.
So, the question I have, and this may go to our city attorney, is I know that you had, with one board, you had a training class on quasi judicial to help them understand what quasi judicial was. And I know that that is a topic that's covered at the, at the Florida League of Cities training as what is a quasi judicial. And it was, and I know it's difficult because different committee members assume their positions all throughout the year at varying times. But it would seem to me that either we have a training class or we offer some, a video or something that is a training that they have to watch in order to understand what this means so that we can at least, I guess it's the, it's the educator in me that says that we need to provide some kind of education to make sure that people understand what their, the expectation and what, what it truly means.
It was, it's in the, it's very clearly written.
I know that. It's written in there, but it's like, but even though it's written in there, David, I can't remember what committee it was, you had, was it one of the canal maintenance committees? I think it was the canal.
Yes, it was.
It was the canal maintenance because they actually do make decisions.
Mm-huh.
And I think if there are any committees that do that, it would seem like periodic training just to reinforce, even though you can read it, it's like sometimes hearing it is another, is, is valid reinforcement for that. So, that's one thought that I have. I also think it's important for us to, to reinforce to all of our boards and committees. I think this is a good lesson for all of our boards and committees to make sure they understand the rules of conduct. And, and that the rules that are written up here are, are very important. We have to live by them, as you said, Mayor. And all of our boards and committee members need to abide by that. And, and we all need to be, we may think one thing, we may say something at home, you know, like, "Ooh." But when we're here, we have to maintain a professional decorum and, and no matter what it is. And, and there may be people, I know there have been times when there have been people that have been very adamant and whatever at, speaking to us, but we still have to maintain our composure. And...
And we can't be name calling.
No. Not at all. So, that part is, that's unacceptable. So, I think that's, it's even, I know that there's, there's a swearing in process, but it's like this, the rules of conduct, it's important that, that be reinforced somehow with all of our committees. We do it on annual basis here. I don't know what would be appropriate for our committees.
Well, you know, as, as was mentioned already, the Florida League of Cities has ethics training we have to go through every year. We have to take an eight hour ethics course, or four hour course, four hour ethics course, feels like eight hours when you're doing it. But I think that something similar to that would be very effective and I think it should be required and they have to take it, take the course and, and be signed off by the city clerk's office acknowledging that they've done that. I'm, I'm just, I was very upset when that meeting was over. And yes, I did talk to myself out loud at home about it because, because it really upset me a lot. Because it also puts the city in a very bad liability position. If anybody does challenge the results of any of those hearings that took place that day, they can go back and play that video all day long. Somebody being called a name or somebody who's, has spoken to the media out loud and been quoted in a national newspaper, that all goes against the city as far as if it goes to a court of law because the appeals process for, for the code enforcement board is a, is an appeals court. And if they take it to court, the city could be in a major problem situation. And it's just not okay. I, I'm really upset about it, really upset about it. So...
If I may, when you look at the quasi judicial hearing procedures and rules for ex parte communications, section one introduction, says the city council with boards, committees, and commissions, so it incorporates everyone, make two types of decisions, legislative and quasi judicial. Legislative involves policy formulation, made sound discretion of the policymaker, yes, discretion. Quasi judicial decisions, on the other hand, it says, must be based upon the application of reliable facts to pre-established criteria, the code. So, it's not whether or not the code is good or not, it's just that is the pre-established criteria. When making a quasi judicial decision, city council or sports committees or commissions act like the judge of a trial where fairness, impartiality, and due process are afforded all parties. Quasi judicial decisions are to be made following hearings where evidence and testimony is presented. Quasi judicial decisions must be based solely upon the evidence and testimony presented at such hearings and in consideration of the pre-established criteria. And then it also talks about maintaining decorum for the proceeding.
John?
One thing, I think that, yeah, that, like Nancy's saying, that actual formal training in how to conduct oneself in a quasi judicial hearing, I, I think that like, on paper, it's too esoteric, it doesn't really mean anything. I think that, you know, when we all did like our email training that dealt with like quasi judicial hearings and zoning law, the examples were given so you were clearly understood what that is and how to implement it. I don't think that that's sufficient to really give guidance to anyone to know really what comprehensive evidence is and those things. I think, I think that really needs to be, there's actual training for that. And I think from this point forward, I think both for those committees that do have quasi judicial hearings, for them to be trained in that and also be some ethics training. But I think that just our boards, this is evidence that our boards need to have this education in order to serve on a board.
This, this particular meeting, though, was egregious. What's the word I want? You know what I'm saying?
Egregious.
Egregious. I mean, this, this went so far over any limit, I mean, no, I, I don't think any reasonable person watching that would think that this is the normal course of business for this board to, to do.
Yeah, if I remember correctly, watching the whole thing, that one of the members was actually more or less putting our code on trial.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's what I object to.
It's like, really?
Yeah.
You know, it's like, that's not the...
And he had given a statement to that regard to the New York Times.
So, it's like, John, you want to say something?
Well, not to go over it again, I totally, I watched it too and I'm totally agreeing with everything said here so far. I think we need some sort of training tool, first of all, as a first thing. And then secondly, we have to deal with the specific issues here. And so, I think we've said, I think, a lot of what's, everybody feels, so now we, we're down to what do we do with...
Okay, we have consensus that we think that formal training and maybe even an ethics course type of thing be implemented for all boards and committees, is that correct?
I would like to take it one step.
Although that, that, have quasi judicial hearings.
Yeah.
Well, the, but see, like, planning commission and BZA sometimes have quasi judicial hearings, so all of those would have to do it.
Yeah. I think we should go one step further, and I brought this up to Greg during our one-on-ones. I would like to see the nominees presented at one city council meeting and the vote done, the, the next one. Because sometimes you just get that resume and it doesn't really tell you anything. And I would like to have a little time to, to study it. You know, I think, I think we need more time and I think we need to look more at the qualifications of some of the people. I, I almost get the impression sometimes that we just take warm bodies, you know, if you raise your hand, you're on. And I think we, we need to look at it a little closer and maybe that would make a difference too. I mean, I do believe, I think the training is imperative, I think we just have to do that. But I also would like a little bit more time between when the name is put in front of us and we vote.
So, no nominate, nominate and appoint?
Yeah.
We just want to do nominate?
I want to do nominate.
And then, and push it back to the next meeting for a vote?
Which, to clarify, what that would mean would be that, for example, today, where you have on the agenda, if you want to introduce yourself, people would actually not just be allowed to, they'd be encouraged to. Talk to council, you can look at their information in front of you and not until the second meeting would you then vote on those individuals, that's what you're talking about?
Right. Because sometimes, you know, in my position with the civic association, I had a lot of run-ins and a lot of encounters, I should say, with all sorts of people. And I don't know them all by name, but I do know them, you know, by face. And I might know that that person is a wonderful volunteer and would be great on this board, but I don't know, I don't remember that by looking at a piece of paper. That's what I'm saying, that's all. I, and everybody that I've seen a resume for that I know, I encourage them to come and talk to us so that we have a face to put with the name. So, that's my suggestion.
John?
I agree that people should be strongly encouraged to come to the council before they get appointed. I was wondering though, what do we do between the day they introduce themselves and when we vote? I mean, we, we have the information we have, we don't have anymore. Are we, are we going to somehow figure, learn more about this person in the interim or...
Well, I think that if they come to the meeting where their name is going to be nominated, that would be the most effective so that your, the name and the face are at the same meeting. I think that would certainly help rather than having it be three separate meetings. But, but I, you know, I, I kind of agree that I think, you know, you, you lose sight of who somebody is when you look at a piece of paper and, and, you know, all of a sudden, I'll see the person and I'll be like, "Oh, I know who that is, yeah." And I, and I do think we need to really screen these resumes a little bit more. Sometimes we just, you're right, we, we put a body in a seat because it's, it's the thing to do and we only had one nominee. Maybe, maybe we don't just appoint one person because that's the only person that applied for the position. We hold the position open until we get at least two people to pick, pick and choose from. I don't know. I mean, and then, you know, there's also the issue of how many boards and committees should one person serve on?
Well, it's in the, it's in the thing they can only serve on one. And that was something else I was going to ask David about. It's in our city charter that they can only serve on one board.
That's interesting because...
One decision-making board.
Well, yeah, one decision-making board, but...
Okay, well, we, we have some things that don't comply with that right now.
Okay, I'll, I'll look into that, but I, we look at that every time. We make sure that they are not nominated for more than one decision-making board. We also do strongly encourage them to come and introduce themselves. There, we communicate with them via email. I personally communicate with them via email and ask them, encourage them, it's not a requirement. If you'd like to make that a requirement, you may do so. Maybe you want to make that a requirement just for quasi judicial. These are, these are your policies and we can change them as you see fit. We, I, I would like to clarify, so you want all of the board members to have ethics training and the quasi judicial, to have the quasi judicial training, correct? You want them all to do ethics?
Are there courses available for just general ethics training for things like this?
I believe the League of Cities has a free video.
They do.
Okay.
The video is four hours long.
It's four hours long, but...
But the guy who does it does a great job.
Yeah. Yeah, they're good. They're good.
It's very remaining and it's very helpful.
David has something.
I'm extremely reluctant to make any comments as the city prosecutor, which is my role in, in this case and also would be my responsibility to defend the appeal which was just filed to challenge the code enforcement board's decisions. But I, I wanted at least share some thoughts nevertheless. The, there, there's a distinction between a quasi judicial board that makes decisions like whether to grant a permit or not and has to be based on the competent substantial evidence in the record before them. And code enforcement board, which is sort of a, a higher level of, of quasi judicial because they are in essence sitting as what used to be called municipal court, which was typically populated by actual judges. And many communities facing situations more often than we do where things get very contentious have replaced code enforcement boards with special magistrates that are generally lawyers. I would recommend highly against that. I appear before a number of jurisdictions that have special magistrates. I think one of the nice things about our code enforcement board is they are members of the community. They are sympathetic to their, the neighbors, but also generally understand what the city council is trying to do because they, they live here. And, and I think our code enforcement board also represents the opinions of many numerous members as opposed to one special magistrate. But I think it's very important that when you appoint people to the board, you really don't have any clear idea as to how they're going to perform. And I don't think it's possible for you to really understand that ahead of time. But in addition to what's provided for in our, our resolution advising that they act like a judge of a trial, when you act like a judge at a trial, it's important not only to be impartial, but to give the appearance of being impartial. So judicial temperament is something that is very important for a member of our code enforcement board. The only way you're going to know that somebody doesn't have the judicial temperament to serve appropriately as the city, a member of the city code enforcement board, is when unfortunately a situation occurs when evidence suggests that the person or persons don't have the sufficient judicial temperament. The concern that I have, and I, let me say, let me say this. I believe that the evidence and testimony and the decision that was made by the code enforcement board to find the alleged violators to have violated the, the city's code was based upon the evidence and testimony and based upon their, their understanding and application of the code. We have, and the, and had the, the assistance of an attorney who was representing the board itself and was advising the board that, for example, the constitutionality of the ordinance was not at issue before the code enforcement board. And I think ultimately, the majority of the code enforcement board that, that voted and to find the violations were making their determination based on the evidence and testimony at the hearing. There were two that voted against finding violation and we can only assume what their reasons were for voting against the violation. So, I believe the decision that was made by the code enforcement board procedurally and substantively will be sustained as being appropriately based on the evidence and testimony presented. There was some allegations made by the attorney representing the respondents that one or more of the code enforcement board members demonstrated animus against the attorney or animus against the clients. In a, in a judicial court of law, an attorney who makes that allegation has the ability to ask that the judge recuse themselves from further deliberation or consideration of the case because of the, the mere appearance of some sort of bias or animosity results in a potential denial of due process. And when, and that, when an attorney makes that allegation and asks the judge to recuse themselves, the judge has not, does not have the right to argue and say, "Oh, I'm, I'm, I can be fair." The, the rules of procedure require the judge to recuse themselves. We have another code enforcement board hearing coming up with similar violations with respect to similar, the same respondents. I, I'm concerned about going into that next hearing with already evidence of the lack of appropriate judicial demeanor and judicial, well, judicial demeanor in that case, and concerned about how to be prepared for that argument before the next code enforcement board. I think at this point in time, if you feel like that there are one or more members of the code enforcement board as demonstrated by their actual activity versus any speculation that may not have the appropriate judicial demeanor for continuing in this case or continuing in other cases general, the city, the, the city council has the ability to take appropriate action because the board members serve at the pleasure of the city council.
With or without cause?
Yeah, yes, with or without cause. I don't know whether you can demand or require that the, one or more of the individuals that you felt may have failed to demonstrate the appropriate judicial temperament and failed to demonstrate or, or act in accordance with their duties of, of appearing to be impartial can simply be removed from considering any further violations with respect to those particular respondents and/or any future violations of the sign code. I don't know if that's workable, but I do have a legitimate concern of being able to defend the city should, should the case, the next code enforcement board hearing find the same violators to be in violation of the code. The, it's a, it's a ready-made argument for the, for the respondents to argue that they were denied due process because the one or more board members came in there based on what was their act... on what was their behavior at the previous Code Enforcement Board, that they were not impartial at the second hearing. So, it's something that needs to be given very serious consideration. And I don't think simply reminding them of their responsibilities is going to cure the problem as it relates to these two defendants.
Yeah, I don't see how they can stay on, I mean, they, to me, they, they just showed that they, they can't uphold our law. And, you know, if it's that big of a problem to them, they should resign, and if they don't resign, we should ask them to go. I really feel that.
I think for me, it's, it's this liability it puts on the city by, by the rules not being followed and professional decorum not being followed. And I don't think we can allow it to continue. I think we have to do something that...
Pretty drastic.
Yeah. Yeah, I do. I'm sorry to do that, it's not about the individuals involved, it's not about anything other than that it's putting the city in a very difficult position, and we would have a hard time defending ourselves if we had to go to a court of law over some of these things. And thankfully, the decision would have remained the same with or without their votes in this case and all of the hearings that took place at that meeting, but I'm, I'm just not okay with what happened. I'm not.
I think, as David has said, it has put in jeopardy the upcoming meetings, so it...
It didn't change the results, but it could have, based on the things that were said and done at that meeting.
And it could in the future.
Right. Well, and, you know, how can we have, how can we have those same people presiding over the same defendants?
And that's my, I mean, that's...
I just don't see how you can do that going forward.
Academically, that's my concern, is that there's a built-in argument for a lack of impartiality by at least two of the board members.
And we talked about the appearance of...
Right.
That basically, you know, if you think I don't like you, you can argue, well, you went against me just because you don't like me, it doesn't matter what the facts were. So, that's sort of the appearance of...
I'm just more troubled by the fact that they didn't support our law, you know, I think...
Again, they represent the city when they sit at this desk, you know?
That's exactly right. I mean, if they had that much trouble, they should have, they should have resigned before the meeting. So what, what can we do? What do we do now?
I can tell you what you have the right to do, and then you decide what you'd like to do short of that, but...
And remember, David is the prosecutor on...
Oh, okay, should I ask Karen?
It limits him to really...
Should we ask Karen?
Well, sure, Karen can probably tell you the same thing that I would tell you.
And then, would that make you be okay in the court of law?
Oh, I'm okay either way.
Oh, okay.
If, if I was perceived to be the protagonist of some type of action that resulted in the removal of two board members, or one or more board members, and they weren't removed, then I'm not sure that I would necessarily get a fair shake as the city prosecutor in the future, so...
You know, I have to tell you, while I was watching that, I was very upset with you. I wanted to reach through the screen because you, I wanted you to do something to fix it. And Greg explained to me that you couldn't because you were one of the fixees. And so, but I did understand after, you know, he explained that. So, I don't want to do anything that would put you in jeopardy because we need you to be our guy.
He was not the attorney for the code board in that meeting.
Yeah, the fixee should have been the code board attorney who did not do...
He didn't do a lot that day. He kind of just sat there most of the time.
I believe he was a stand-in also.
Regardless, he had a job to do.
In all fairness, there were efforts made, to the extent that I could, through the chairman, and, and by trying to prompt the board's attorney to try to nip that in the bud. I think that the two that were problematic had the opportunity to cure their behavior immediately and didn't choose to do so.
Except the guy who talked to the New York Times.
Well, I'm saying...
That's not curable.
Exactly. I mean, he, I made, made the argument immediately that bringing in something from, that was prepared, I don't know that I knew at that time that he had made comments to the New York Times, I think I found out the next day. But I tried to argue that he shouldn't be doing that because I can't advise him not to do it. It didn't seem to make a difference.
So, do we, do we move to replace? What do we want to do?
Well, I think Karen, we...
Can you tell us what the options are, please?
I would say the options are to, well, I don't, I don't think from, based on what you've said, there's really more than one option, and that would be for you to make a motion to remove the two board members in question and to announce those vacancies. You can, you can let them remain on the board or remove them. Those are your options.
And then, the guys that were, well, I'll just leave it. Now, we need to counsel the rest of them as to what is proper decorum for...
That's the training piece.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The rest of them can stay on the board as long as they go through the training.
Well, I, in the meantime, we've got another hearing coming up in September that we have to be concerned about.
Do we have alternates?
All people, all, all members of the board that, at that meeting, were not a problem.
Right.
And so, but it doesn't hurt to remind everyone of our rules of conduct and that kind of thing. As I watched it, you know, it's like, and I thought, you know, if I was the chairman, I really thought that, you know, that the chairman had a tough job. So, but it was a, I think that we, listening to David, I don't, I think if we do nothing, then it's putting in jeopardy future decisions that we have, that our Code Enforcement Board is going to have to make, and I don't think that that's something that we can do.
No, we can't do nothing.
We can't do nothing.
I believe without alternates, there is still a quorum.
There is.
And since we do have a city council meeting next week?
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Two weeks, yeah, which is before the next Code Enforcement Board hearing. Hopefully, if there are vacancies on the Code Enforcement Board, they can be replaced before that time so that we're not left with a Code Enforcement Board of members that were in the affirmative of the finding of violation. We have a full board before.
Well, then, we would have to go back to nominating and appointing if that...
I don't know that you have any real, real way of determining judicial temperament prior to seeing them in action.
Okay, okay.
That's why, and that's why, that's why, that's really why the ordinance, as it relates to the Code Enforcement Board and, and the remedy that you have available to you, is more important in that context than others because due process is so important in that consideration. It's more than just issuing a permit, we have fines involved, for example. And so, you have the ability to take very swift action when necessary to maintain the integrity of the board.
Okay, well, we need somebody to make a motion to some extent. Don't everybody talk at once?
I move that we remove the two worst offenders who, I don't know how to say it.
Well, the city clerk, I think, should...
Give us their names.
Yeah, I mean, to clarify, you're concerned about the two that voted against the finding of the violation, so...
But I, that's not my reasoning.
No, 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 but for identification purposes, if the clerk can identify who those two people were that voted in negative.
But I don't want, I don't want that to go on the record as why I want them removed. I want them removed because they did not uphold and indicated no desire to uphold the law of the city.
Will include that in your motion?
That's my motion.
Do we have a second?
Is there a second?
Well, no, need to identify.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Oh, that would be Mr. Jay Nadelson and Mr. Edward Weiner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to remove Mr. Weiner and Mr. Nadelson from the Code Enforcement Board for the reasons stated in the vice mayor's motion.
I'd like to make an amendment.
Okay.
That it include judicial temperament, because that's what David was talking about, was that they did not exhibit judicial temperament. It has nothing to do with, I agree with you, that the responsibility is to hold the code of the city ordinances, but it also was the judicial temperament.
Okay, do we have a second to the amendment?
Would you agree to amend your motion, Debbie?
Yeah.
And we have a second.
You want to just add it to her motion, then?
Well, I would, I would rather you, you vote on the amendment and then go ahead and vote on the original motion.
Okay, so, we have an amendment to the motion, and you, did you say second? So, we have an amendment, motion, and a second to that to amend the motion as described by Councilmember Prafki. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now, we vote on the actual motion.
And you're still in discussion on that?
Yeah.
If I could make a comment?
Sure.
Under discussion. So, now, we have judicial temperament, and what you were describing is really impartiality because an unwillingness to uphold our law means you're not impartial when you hear that. So impartiality and judicial temperament are the two things we were really discussing. So, that seems to cover those items.
Do we need to have another amendment to include the word?
I don't, I...
I wouldn't.
Greg, I don't like the word impartiality. To me, that does not mean, that's not the same thing as not willing to uphold the law.
No, that's true.
I don't see those as synonymous at all.
I'm just looking at the ordinance and...
Yeah, but I...
The requirement of impartiality.
Because they could have been impartial, but they still weren't upholding our law.
Yep, true.
Okay, so, we're going to not do anything about the word impartiality?
I mean, you guys can vote on it, but I object to changing the word.
I mean, what, I mean, from the standpoint of us doing this really based on pretty much not doing one's duty on this board, I mean, I want to make sure that we word this properly. So, I mean, how, how would we articulate this?
Could you say that again? I can't hear you.
And what I'm saying, ultimately, we're saying that when it came down to it, it's one's not performing their duties on the board in, you know, most professional capacity. And that, with that said, it puts the city in jeopardy because decisions then at that point, you know, there's pretty much in terms of the public trust at that point becomes jeopardized. And that's more or less, I guess, I want to make sure this is articulated right in the motion.
Okay. Do you want to, you want me to withdraw my motion, or do what he said?
I think, I think that what counts, I think that that comes in the nature of, of the discussion on the motion, because clearly, as the clerk indicated, you, you have the ability to remove without cause. And so, you've expressed your reasons for making the motion, there's discussion that's in support of the motion, and I think the record would be adequate for that.
And may I request, please, that the minutes for this discussion item be thorough minutes rather than abbreviated minutes so that it's all documented?
We can include that discussion, we, anything that's controversial, we tend to include more information.
Great, thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor for Councilmember Carey's comments earlier, her motion earlier. Is there any further discussion on that? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, thank you.